Fergus.
Here.
Mr. Manfris?
Present.
Mr. Overly?
Here.
Mr. Way?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mr. Napi?
Present.
In the center, here. We have a forum.
Okay, yes, we do. Before we get started, transitions. First of all, this is TJ Manfris's last meeting. TJ's been great. Excellent job.
Thanks, Bill.
We appreciate you. We're gonna miss you. So, but yeah, good luck. And our newest member is Lauren Benner. Got that right, okay? Sitting by right over here. Welcome, Lauren.
You.
Half of everybody. And with that, let's get going. Everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the minutes. Call the floor, please.
Was that moved by Mr. Way and seconded by Mr. Napi? Okay, perfect. Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
Mr. Manfris?
Approve.
Mr. Overly?
Abstain.
Mr. Way?
Approve.
Mr. Bush?
Abstain.
Mr. Napi?
Approve.
And Ms. Benner will not be voting as she was not with us at that time.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Moving on, continued applications. We have EF 2206002. Address 567 West Broad Street. Applicant is Colin Brinkman. And lifelong Learning Administration Corporation is the owner. Stephanie Stafford, please.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting review and action on two wall signs. The proposal includes a cabinet sign on the northeast corner of the building, which is a new five foot ten inch wide by three foot ten inch high base for the existing sign cabinet. Black cut vinyl face over flat white polycarpet with vinyl lettering word "Hi", logo and address numbers. The cabinet will be lit internally with new LED lighting. There will also be a raceway mounted channel letter sign on the north elevation within the brick band that is a new eleven foot five eighths inch wide by two foot two inch high wall sign. Channel letters to be three inch black channels with black trim cap with color over vinyl overlays. Taglines be white acrylic panel with black vinyl lettering. Channel letters and taglines be mounted to a raceway which will be attached to the building. Extruded aluminum raceway painted to mesh the brick. And the sign will be internally illuminated with white LEDs. The applicant previously appeared before the East Franklinton Review Board at the June 2022 meeting, at which time the board was generally supportive of the channel letter sign, but recommended the applicant explore various placement options in the brick band. Further, the board requested the applicant propose alternate designs for the cabinet signs to make it less overwhelming. And the board also asked the applicant to, that the signs be shown on the approved elevations rather than the existing condition. The supplemental includes site information as well as elevations, renderings, and specifications for the proposed signs. For the staff analysis, the proposal is generally inconsistent with the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan. Plan recommends that single tenant buildings should have one projecting sign and either one wall sign or one awning sign. The applicant is proposing two wall signs. Further, the plan recommends that signage should not obscure any architectural elements and that the installation should not permanently alter or damage the building. The proposed location for the raceway sign obscures an architectural element of the building and could be unnecessarily damaging to the historic masonry. Finally, the plan states that internally illuminated box sign cabinets are not appropriate. The applicant is proposing to reface an existing box sign. As such, staff supports the box sign portion of the proposal since the cabinet is existing. Staff could support two wall signs on the building if the raceway sign was relocated over the west entry where a second wall sign would have historically been located and attached to the metal paneling instead of the new screen. Staff's recommendation is conditional support with the condition being that the raceway sign be attached to the metal paneling above the western entry.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. I suppose my quick and easy question is to be right now on those two. We have left and centers. And staff wants it right on the, as I'm looking at that building.
Staff's recommendation would be that it be on the metal paneling, not on the brick.
Okay, so that'd be all the way to the right then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there are actually three options. It's just there's only two on this page. So they're showing a third option where it's directly in the center of the door panel.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. State your name, please. Colin Brinkman. And do you swear or affirm the statements you're about to make, true and accurate, best of your knowledge and belief?
I did. Sure. Yeah, so we were, I was here last month and we were just kind of working through this. So we'll start with the box sign. We wanted to have it dumbed down, the size of the logo and everything. We presented two options. One's a little bit larger than the other. So we cut it down by about fifty percent in size for the bottom one and then seventy-five percent for the top one there. And then for the channel letter sign, we went ahead and proposed three alternative locations for it. One on the far right of the brick, one in the middle, and one on the far left. We were discussing last month, we were kind of okay with that. It's just you guys wanted to see kind of how the channel letter sign would look on a rendering of what the building will look like once every other construction is completed. So we provided those three options there. As far as anything else.
Colin, can I ask a quick question? What's the, what's the difference between page four and five and six and seven? Is it just the background of the, of the exist, the picture that has the existing like light blue siding you darken to look like the approved side of it is going to be there? That's the only difference between those two sheets, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't even, sorry about that. Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Isn't there a difference in the box signs? Well, there's two sets of sheets, four and five, are the same sheet with blue background and then gray black ground. And five and six, or whatever, six and seven are the larger size with the blue background. Like, I just wasn't sure if there was any other.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I guess between, between the two sizes, I would, I'd prefer the bigger size. And the other one looks like it's box. Best space. But I have another question, and I, I apologize, I was not at the meeting last, I was at part of the meeting, but not when you presented. Was there a lot of discussion about saving that upper tan brick? You know, basically, it's the as-is condition. Rather than, yeah, I mean, basically, we're just keeping everything as-is and painting. The metal remains, the...
If you go to page one, yeah, that is the approved exterior from previous
Meeting.
From previous meeting.
Okay.
And I think we were talking about going over that second entrance there, but as we discussed, that's not going to be a main entrance, so they don't want it to be like an issue for wayfinding. The main entrance is going to be on that corner.
Staff preferred it being on the gray metal on the west side, but that's, that's not a usable entrance. So they preferred it not being all that, that far west.
And we, as a board, suggested that they look at putting it on the brick. Yes. So that's the direction we think of, which is not what staff is regular.
I like both the options. I agree with you. I like the larger of the two fonts on the panel sign. And I will leave it to the architects to tell me where on A, B, or C on the, on the brick it should go.
I'd pick A. If it's going on the brick. I mean, I get the, the wayfinding issue that you'd be putting signage where an entrance isn't. So I, I, I would prefer that it be closer to the entrance and centered over that set of windows.
And another part of our discussion at the last meeting was that putting them close together might be just too much. So I think the board has kind of suggested they shouldn't build a part of each other. So, so I would actually support option B and that refri- Do I hear, do I hear C?
I'll offer something in the picture as a non-architect. I find C the one that centers it to be the, to be the better option.
Yeah, I'm with you. That's where I'm actually heading towards too, is C.
Visually, what it, what it tells me is you have this corner sign where the entrance is, then you have a sign that looks like it's centered on the rest of the building. Now, just as a matter of fact, you're using that other piece of the building. But, you know, as an outsider, why do I care about that?
Yeah, it's centered on the brick band.
So there's, so there's three components to that facade, right? There's the tall windows, there's the square windows, and then there's the entry storefront looking piece. So there's three components to the facade. And my rationale was the centering on the center component of that three parts. But that brick sign being above isn't centered on either of the windows on the south floor.
There's just a lot of things going on. I don't think there's a, there's not a bright answer. Like, option C feels a little ax in the forehead to me, but...
Well, it's, it's over a con, it's over kind of a vertical element.
Right. It tries to make sense of that leftover brick band, so...
Yeah, B would work if the brick band went all the way down.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, I think that the client has a list of their preference.
Yeah. So they prefer option B for number one, option C for number two, and then the last option's option A. Sorry about that.
Like I said, I...
So, so for the panel sign, they prefer the larger font for option B, right? Yeah, for the, for the illuminated box sign. Yeah, the larger. And for the, and for the, the wall mount or the brick sign, they prefer option B.
Correct. Yes. So to, right.
To straw poll. Preference, raise your hands for preference for option A.
Which sign are we talking about?
That's the wall sign, the wall sign.
Yeah, yeah. Let's start with, let's start with the wall sign. The one that seems more contentious.
It's up right now.
Yeah, the one's on the board now. All those in favor of option A? All right, that seems out. Option B?
I'll do with option.
And option C? I think we, well, we got three, three of them staying.
I'll, I'll be the tiebreaker. I'll go with the owner. I, I don't, I don't have enough of a, a care on that placement. If the owner prefers option, they'd for B or C. Do they prefer B or C?
They prefer B over C.
Okay, I mean, I, it's close enough that the owner's preference is, is fine. Okay, seems we've resolved that one. Now for, now for the corner. All those in favor of the larger font? All right, we got that. All right. At this point, I will entertain a motion.
One point clarification, I'm sorry. Only because I thought that you had said that they liked B, but then came back and said that they liked C. So they, they're back to B being their...
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to be, be clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, really, you'll be the way to me.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve as submitted with the stipulation that option A be eliminated. And the owner can choose between option B or C.
Okay.
And that for the box sign, the larger font be used.
Okay, seconded. Then who would have seconded to?
It's a little clarify, B or C, all this double for the wall sign.
Yeah, so...
We're giving them the option.
You have the choice. Yeah, you have B or C for the channel letter. Okay.
So I've got a motion by Mr. Napi to basically conditionally approve the application with the conditions being that the applicant choose between option B or C for the channel letters. And that they go with the larger font option for the cabinet sign. Correct?
Correct. The floor, please.
Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
Mr. Manfris?
Approve.
Mr. Overly?
Approve.
Mr. Way?
Approve.
Mr. Bush?
Approve.
Mr. Napi?
Approve.
And Ms. Benner?
Thank you. So we've got new applications. First one is EF 2207001. Address 640 West Town Street. Applicant is Arch City Development and the owner is White Chapel Apartments LLC. Stephanie Stafford, please.
Thank you. EF 2207001. This is a application for new construction. The applicant is returning to the East Franklinton Review Board for final approval of the project within the sub, within the Dodge Car Sub District, including minor architectural revisions, material changes, landscaping, lighting, and development standard modification requests. As a reminder, the proposal includes the following: A new five-story, forty-one-unit apartment building with partially covered ground-level parking at the corner of West Town Street and South Grub Street; A new infill three-unit apartment building at 647 West Chapel Street; Renovation of an existing single-family home at 641 West Chapel Street; New surface parking lot, combination of four parcels; demolition of existing gas station at 640 West Town. At the April 2022 meeting, the EFRB conditionally approved the project, including the demolition of the existing gas station, lot combination, architecture, materials, and a height modification of an increase of twenty-one feet. The conditions imposed were that the applicant would return to the board for review and approval of landscaping and lighting, and that the proposed balconies would be black. Since the April 2022 review, the applicant has made the following changes: Architectural modifications to the 647 West Chapel Street building, proposing to demolish the existing rear deck and shed at 641 West Chapel; Provided a schematic plan for the amenity deck, including multiple seating areas and options, a grill, gas fireplace, sink, mural, green wall, pergolas, television, and lighting. They are requesting modifications for vision clearance, parking setback, and interior landscaping. They provided information on their landscaping and screening, including hornbeam trees proposed along South Grub and West Town. Parking lot to be screened with a combination of three-foot wood fencing to be stained black along the north and then burning bushes on the east and west. They have provided information on their lighting. Two new light pole fixtures will be in the parking lot. The town street building light fixtures are identified and shown on night elevations. And then the sconces have been identified for the West Chapel Street units. They're also showing a transformer located at the corner of West Town and South St. Est. The plan includes a site plan, floor plans, elevation renderings, and material cut sheets. The proposal is consistent with recommendations of the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan. The plan recommends new construction should be integrated within the existing neighborhood. While the proposed West Town Street building is larger than the surrounding buildings, the design and materiality combined with the infill on West Chapel reduce the overall visual impact of the development. Further, the plan recommends landscaping and lighting that enhance the project while not creating nuisances to surrounding properties or safety concerns. The proposal is also consistent with these guidelines. The plan recommends a historic and other contributing building to be preserved to the extent possible. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing historic single-family home at 641 West Chapel. And finally, the plan recommends that street trees be on all public and private streets. Of note, the applicant is requesting a modification to clear vision requirements. The Department of Public Service, Division of Traffic Management, has reviewed the proposal and is in support of this request. As such, planning staff is also supportive of the request. Staff is supportive of the overall proposal. If approved, the board would be approving the following code development standard modifications: A vision clearance modification to reduce clear vision triangle through the parking drive aisle on South Sandusky Street to zero feet; A parking setback modification to reduce the minimum parking setback on the north end of the parking under the main building from five foot to zero; And an interior landscaping modification to allow for shade trees to be located along the sidewalk further submitted site open. Staff recommends approval without condition.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for staff?
Remind me of, I'm pretty sure I can answer this, but is three feet the minimum required for screening of parking in the code?
So?
And we have this question.
The applicant knows the answer to that.
I believe it's three feet.
I think it is. I can pull up the code to check, but...
Are you talking about the south? Well, it's, oh, it's, there's fence in the wall. Parking is screened, that's...
Well, the east side.
It's also... There's some, right?
Yeah.
It's a park from the screen.
I'm just, I'm looking at the streets that are east side, there's some...
The only parking lot screening is on that... The, the only parking lot screening with the fence is on that north side parking lot in the backyard of the three existing homes, right?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Oh, it's not on Grove Street, too?
No, that's the property line that's dark dashed.
Oh, okay. Well, this is a question for the applicant, so it's been a whole...
All right, let's, let's, we're in the application, we're gonna get on with it here. State your names on the record, please.
Brian Higgins.
Maria Anderson.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The floor is yours first of all, and then Kim can fire away at you.
I think Stephanie did an excellent job summarizing the multitude of videos and gratitude changes since our last visit here. Nothing earth-shattering, maybe the biggest thing is the change to the new construction three-unit building, sort of the northwest, north-center corner Chapel Street. We reoriented the way those units lay out internally and they give a kind of different look to the, to the building, but we think that it's complementary not only to the existing home that we control, but, you know, it's consistent with what you see in the community. So you have three essentially vertical townhomes there where we had flats in the previous incarnation. That's the biggest thing. I don't know that we formalized the demolition of the shed that exists behind the house that we're retaining on, on Chapel Street last time we were here. And certainly, I think the proposed demolition of the rear porch of that building is new and worth noting. You know, I, those are probably the most significant things, would you say? Or are you something eluding me?
No, we developed the landscape and the extra lighting information, and we also further developed the amenity deck information.
We have a burning bush?
Yes.
That's so vivid. But, yeah, I don't even know what that means, but it sounds cool. To me, it's very much like, and I feel like it'll impart wisdom upon, even though it brought them on. Yeah, I do think it's worth noting, since we could see the amenity deck from the public right-of-way. Stephanie suggested that we kind of flush that out a little bit, so we've done that. Should be in your packet, so can see different things there, to the extent that those are visible from the street. Yeah, landscaping, lighting. The, the balconies are black. Yeah, I think we're gonna need to check in with the city's forester to make sure all our landscaping placement was appropriate. And he signed up on that. So, yeah, certainly we'll entertain any questions you might have. I don't know if we have any, if you had something you wanted to add.
Just that we provided on SD 001 an elevation comparison of the new house that was approved previously, so you can see the elevation differences.
Yeah, I like, I like the, the new one.
I love old is on top and new is down.
Yes.
It kind of like the dormer.
House is old, better.
Yeah.
Questions, anybody?
So, back to the fence. So I was interpreting certain lines to be fencing. So the only place that there's actually a, a screened fencing is on that north side up against the existing residential.
Correct. The rest of it is landscaping, right? It serves as a visual barrier between the site and either the side yard of those homes or the street itself.
So, burning bushes are really nice. They're brilliant red in fall, that's why they're called burning bushes. But they're deciduous, meaning they lose their leaves. So, to me, I, I think the parking lot should be screened, especially along Grove Street, with something that's more opaque. So either it's fencing or it's some kind of an evergreen, like true. I think up against the residential was probably a little bit less critical. And you've got the fence on the north side, so... Any thoughts about that?
I think a hardscape barrier along the right-of-way is sort of, I don't know, it sends a, it sends a message that lacks inclusivity, right? Like, stay on that side of the fence, man. You know, for example, there's, I forget what it's called. Maybe it's Tribeca at Third Mullen Tangi. If you go from Mullen Tangi towards that Giant Eagle and Grand Yard, I hate the big brick wall they have there, because it feels that way. It feels like, you know, it's kind of how I hate Cozai. That's a big wall that says you can't come downtown. That's a whole nother issue. But, but, you know, anytime I think that, you know, or at least I feel like landscaping is permeable, you know? I understand your point. I mean, we can entertain a different kind of, maybe we need a pine tree or something that hangs in there a little longer. I don't know, I'm not a forester, but I, you know, just in terms of hardscape versus softscape, you know?
You know, just the, you know, any cars all parked there is not the most beautiful edge to anything, so it's, it's more...
I'm having trouble hearing you, sorry.
What's that?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Hello?
There we go.
Actually, that, this is actually, it works, this is just... So, again, that's, that's the edge I'm most concerned about, creating more...
The eastern, the eastern edge?
Yeah, Grove Street. The rest is obviously back into existing residential, assuming those folks are okay with what you're proposing, or they be here. So, you know, I would either urge that there's a fence along Grove Street, and I take your point that fences, you know, are barriers. But if not a fence, then putting some kind of a vegetative barrier that's opaque and...
Like a lower shrub, maybe that's like a slight...
Right, yeah. Evergreen shrub that grows at least four feet.
Which I think the code says something like that. I hate to lose the burning bushes, but I think it's very, but I'm with you on that, but I think...
Well, they'll be on the other side. They'll be on the other side.
Oh, they will?
Over next to the residential. But Stephanie, is the, we've had this issue before about screening parking. And is that in the more commercial areas that we have a, between residential and commercial, where there's a requirement for?
Fence.
Fence, right? Here, we don't have that requirement. Because it's residential to residential, right?
Yes. And I think those houses have fencing in their backyards.
Do not recall.
I thought they had kind of some fence back in the back.
Looks like, looks like all three of those existing houses do.
Yeah, I like the fence. I, I mean, it'd be better for the residents of those units, you know, or that fence. Don't let their dogs go through the bushes to get to the parking lot. It's them a little physical separation to the parking. I'm okay with the, the kind of softer landscape screening, as long as it's something that doesn't lose its needs.
Devil's advocate, it's just a parking lot across Grove Street that does not have any screening, right now, right now.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's commercial.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so it's...
The, the code says that total height of no less than three feet above the parking lot grade into an opacity of not less than seventy-five percent for screening with plantings, the opacity shall be determined when plants are in leaf.
That doesn't make any sense, what happens in the winter.
Well, that's where I pile up the snow.
You gotta shellac seventy-five percent of the leaves, those deciduous trees.
There's no more winters.
So you were saying you prefer the fence on the residential?
I prefer the fence on the residential and the landscape, right?
And I'm happy with landscape as long as it's... And that's enough, so it's opaque. Space, plant space appropriately. Is that, that rendering right there shows that, right? So, you know, what you see is cars, right? It'd be nice to provide a better screen then. Probably taller. And it's the comment that staff made about the street trees all the way around, is that what I read?
The plan recommends street trees on all public streets. They did check in with the city forester who recommended them not being along Grove, but they are showing them on... Um, but they are showing them on Chapel now. Whereas previously, they were just on Grub and Town, now they're showing them on Town and Chapel.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so the forester did not recommend them on Grub because of the dimension?
I'm not sure the reason, I was thinking probably proximity to the intersection.
That's right, I think it's fifty feet clearance.
That's why I think it's even more important, then, something.
Who else?
Yeah, I'm reading.
I'll go next. I, I only have two items. Um, one, I just want to make sure that I clarify, or when, when you guys submit for staff approval and stamping, I'd like to show that you guys are either staining or painting the underside of the wood balconies to match the composite decking above, so that they are black and they're not a weathered wood underneath that wouldn't really match the rest of the building. The, the second item would be the transformer that's on the corner. It looks, some of these elevations show it and show that there's like a block wall around part of it. Um, or there may be a framed fence around part of it. What, what do you have? What, what's your plan there?
We're showing a block wall because it will have to be rated, it's not meeting the ten foot offset. I'm basing this, I'm not sure who the, it's City of Columbus or A E P, and then the rest of it would be screened, matching fenced.
With matching three foot fencing?
Uh, wood fencing.
That's six foot tall or five foot tall?
Uh, yeah.
I want, I, I want to try to not see the transformer on the front corner of the building.
Usually A E P or the city will give us requirements for that, and it's a pretty tall fence. We need those requirements, I just don't know who that is right now.
That'd be, that'd be my only concern, if there's a, if there's a fence on it and it matches the three foot fence in the back, but it's a five foot fence or a six foot fence and it's stained or painted, that's fine. If it's brick all the way around and masonry, that probably looks even better if it ties into the side of the building and kind of you lose it from an aesthetic standpoint and you don't know that there's a transformer there, that's great. If there's a possibility of putting a wall, a manhole on the corner there, losing it altogether, that's probably the best solution, but as long as it's, as long as it's covered, especially when you're, you know, you're, you're getting off three fifteen or coming into Franklinton from that side, that's the first thing that's with your building, is you come under the bridge right there and and see that, as long as it's covered and, and screened, I'm, I'm.
Is there a reason why you didn't consider the transformer, or were you told where the transformer could go? As opposed to up in the put it up on the other side of the entrance to the parking?
It's due to the distance of the building and the, and the location of the electrical room.
Oh, I see. It's got to be close to the electrical.
I'm also looking at uh, split base that matches the brick, I don't know if that would be also approved. Looking at matching the brick, basically, or the fence that we're proposing.
I think matching the building versus matching the fence would be better. Because the fences in the back, it's not really related to it, so if it's somehow tied into the architectural enclosure, that would be ideal.
What if it was sort of an art piece, I see a lot of transformers get I don't know whether they're, they're just auto wrapped.
Had that conversation with the city, and they're not really.
It didn't go well.
Sure, lots of really good pictures of how that works.
It's like it draws more attention to it than less. You know, I like the, just using the the base material of the building. No new material, it's just, you know, it's part of that base symbol.
It's all about that base.
If there's not, if there's not doors on it and it's seen from the, from the alley coming southbound on that, that alley, that's totally fine, as long as it's not seen coming east down, down, uh, town or in the front, from the front elevation, I think is the, as long as the front and the west side are, are, have it screened.
I mean, you can't come from the you can't come east anyway, so the people who are going west.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Other than my only two.
Anyone else?
I think it looks really good.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, well, we need a motion. Uh, not, I'm not really sure of the conditions. Uh, T J, you want to take a crack at it?
This is Kim, they're all Kim's conditions. This is your last meeting, though, it's a real opportunity. Center to shine, set the record down.
So, Kim, if, if all your conditions fire away.
Well, motion to approve with substitution of evergreen shrubs along Grub, uh, and, you know, spaced appropriately, and approved material by the forester, that's going to provide screening to the parking lot that edge. Just something about the transformer?
Yes.
And that we, we would prefer the transformer be screened with material that's on the building.
On the base.
On the base. The base.
I want to take out the words "we would prefer", it's either going to be do it or don't.
Yes. We'll take those out.
And that staff confirms there's a note on the plan that says stains or paints the underside of all wood balconies.
Yes, it's six hundred.
Get all that stuff, will you?
Working on it.
Say that out. You shouldn't be like, what?
Okay, and then when Mr. Overly, was there a desire for there to be a condition that he fence be the screening in lieu of burning bushes on the east side of the parking, or no?
No.
No, okay, so.
I, I think their solution makes sense.
Okay, so, uh, just to make sure I got all those. Mr. Way has motioned for a conditional approval with the conditions being that the applicant uh, substitute the um, plant material on the west parking lot along, no, east parking lot along uh, Grove Street with an evergreen material approved by the city forester to screen the parking lot. Um, that the transformer be screened with material to match the base of the building. And that there be a note on the plans that the underside of the balcony be painted. Okay.
I'll second it. Yeah, and when you're ready, call, call rolls.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fergus?
Approved.
Mr. Mantris?
Approved.
Mr. Overly?
Approved.
Mr. Way?
Approved.
Mr. Bush?
Approved.
Mr. Knoppe?
Approved.
And Ms. Benner, approved, no theories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is E F twenty-two oh seven double oh two, address is five oh one West Broad Street, um, Grab three. Jessica Shur is the applicant and the Gravity Project Three L L C is the owner. Uh, staff report, please. Oh, yeah, we have two recusals here, Mr. Bush and Mr. Way will recuse themselves.
E F twenty-two zero seven zero zero two for five oh one West Broad Street. The applicant is returning to the East Franklin Review Board for final approval of the project within the West Broad Street Sub District, including minor architectural revisions, materials and lighting. As a reminder, the proposal includes the following: seven-story mixed-use building with three hundred and thirteen rental units, fifty-three hundred square feet of commercial, twenty-three thousand square feet of outdoor amenity space and two stories of podium parking, a pocket park, demolition of four seventy-nine and four ninety-one West Broad and fifty-five Mc Dowell, and loads a combination of four parcels. At the April twenty twenty-two meeting, E F R V conditionally approved the project, including a height modification of an increase of twenty feet. The conditions imposed were that the applicant would return for board review and approval of landscaping, lighting materials, and the inclusion of additional vertical relief along the garage structure. The applicant has since received approval of their landscaping proposal at the June twenty twenty-two E F R V meeting. The applicant had previously received approval for the demolition and lock combinations. The proposal includes the following minor architectural revisions: a decrease in the amount of vertical lattice elements at the balconies, removal of precast fins that extend from the ground level up to the first level of residential balconies, breaking up the garage facade and adjusted roof design. The applicant has also provided material specifications and cut sheets for board review and approval, as well as the lighting plan for the project. The submitted includes site plans, floor plans, elevations, renderings, material specifications and cut sheets, as well as distinct vision photos. The proposal is generally consistent with the East Franklin Creative Community District Plan. The plan states that a wide range of architectural styles are appropriate with preference for contemporary building design and materials. The design revisions and proposed materials are in line with this recommendation. However, the East Franklin Creative Community District Plan also recommends that larger buildings should be divided into smaller bays and include vertical elements. The proposal is somewhat consistent with these recommendations. For lighting, the plan recommends that lighting should be appropriate to its location and used to enhance security and highlight distinguishing characteristics of the building. The proposal is consistent with these guidelines. However, the plan also recommends that lighting should generally produce consistent levels of light and color throughout and be directed downward or fully shielded to prevent spillage or shine above the horizontal plane. The applicant has noted that the building's sponsors will only be downlit and that the lighting colors will not change. Part of the applicant is proposing several fixture types that will emanate light upwards and outwards, which is not consistent with plan recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the project without condition.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, uh, applicants, will you identify yourselves, please?
Stephanie J. Luba, Kaufman Developer.
And Mike Sirianni with A B B J.
Okay, and uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you to the board for your time, um, we're excited to be back here presenting what we hope to be the last for Greenhouse Gravity. And we thank you for staff for your thorough summary, um, in the reading that you did. Jessica sends her regards, she uh, is sad that she can't be here today. But uh, I'm sure she's enjoying her much deserved vacation. I want to take a quick moment to review our prior approvals. In November twenty twenty-one, we conceptually introduced the project. In April twenty twenty-two, we received architectural approval with condition that we refine the openings at level one. And in June twenty twenty-two, we received our landscape approval. We are now returning to ask for three items, approval of materials, building lighting, as well as architectural modifications, including conditions at level one of the project. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and watch if the architectural changes.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. I think um, for members of the commission that were, um, or the board that were, um, have, have kind of been through and seen some of the uh, renderings and planning adjustments that we've made over time. Um, I think you'll find that um, a lot of the, the pieces are, are minor, um, in nature, they're really kind of refinements through the, um, through, through the process. So, just to highlight, um, a few, um, really no significant, um, plan changes, there was a revision to, um, I think some of the, the entries of garage, they made the need for a, a triangle variance, so um, we, we aren't requiring that. Um, I think with regard to uh, elevations, uh, I want to touch on a, a few of the items. One, um, the reduction of the um, vertical lattice, um, that aims to connect some of the balconies, um, as you uh, move uh, from the top of the project to the bottom. Um, we are uh, aiming to do that selectively, um, and so in areas that are, uh, don't immediately address the street, um, we are looking to remove those, so we still get the in and out of the balconies on the, it's really only on the south side and on the interior courtyards. So, in areas where, um, on the, uh, on the east, north and west, where we're on Broad, McDowell, Meg, um, those stay intact, um, on the south, they, um, on the interior corridor, they'll be eliminated, um, and again, that's, um, just for some of the, all the stuff that's, they have a, a landscape part that's happening in the south. The courtyards are, um, somewhat tighter and, and for cost and efficiency of where we, we have some of the, the, it's like the project, we're just trying to be surgical about that. Um, additionally, some of the balconies have been right-sized, and by that I mean, um, they were small reductions, either in uh, some of the angles in terms of how far they were out or how far they came in, or how far away they have worked from the corner, and I think, um, as we started to work through, um, structurally, some of the, the implications that we had were, it just, it requires a right sizing, so um, I don't know that you'll see uh, significant visual impact, it's just really that they have, um, started to be reduced to, to work better with units, um, or just modified to work better with, um, uh, the structural, uh, uh, needs for the project. Um, roof angles, so you'll notice that some of the parapets are a little less aggressive than previous submissions. Um, and I think Stephanie may have put that in an email previously, or, or just as a comparison to show you the difference between the two. We wanted to make sure that we are maintaining that, um, variation on some of the facades from, uh, in, in terms of that parapet uh, moving up and down, you'll see some of those angles, they're just a little bit less, um, so as not to produce, um, significant, um, you know, moment at that, um, at that upper piece that then would require more structure, et cetera, et cetera, so we just, we wanted to keep it in the project, but we didn't, um, uh, we needed to make it rated in line a little bit and dial it, dial it down then. Um, core heights, um, the, some of the core locations, uh, were the, the heights of those, uh, pieces that are the, uh, the core ten or we want, we want a rust material. Um, we've kept that overrun at the McDowell side, we maintain that height. Um, still, each of those locations are stepping back, but again, in, in all the other locations, we're reducing those, so as not to create, um, uh, a problematic condition where we have a significant amount of parapet where we don't, don't need it, so you'll see it at the entry on McDowell, we feel that's a really important elevation to emphasize, um, that, that change in height. But in other locations, um, we've reduced that, uh, again, we don't think it's a huge impact to the overall aesthetic from the, of the project, especially as uh, for someone on grade, um, and in terms of the, the, the overall urban experience, but, um, it's, it's something that's, that's helping us overall in terms of the project. Um, additionally, one of the, the comments, and I think, uh, Mr. Overly brought this up, um, on one of the previous meetings, about the space between at grade, um, some of the, the bay locations where we've got those, uh, those kind of steps of the weaving, uh, balconies. What we've done is introduce, um, uh, I'll call it a bamboo, uh, a precast bamboo element that kind of varies, um, along the facade and, uh, kind of use, is used to interrupt some of those, um, some of those portions, or, or as a go-between, between locations where we don't have the vertical elements. Um, and that was just a, as a comment, that kind of picks up on, uh, what we're doing at the retail location, so you know, we have that as a, a three-dimensional piece at those retail elements on Broad and on McDowell, um, and then as a, uh, as a kind of facade element as we get towards, uh, at the garage location, so we need, you know, um, as a way to kind of break that up a little bit more. So hopefully, um, you'll, you'll see that that, um, has been integrated as well. Um, in terms of materials, I think, um, I'm passing some around, but, um, we've, we, I know, uh, Kaufman wanted to look at, um, market conditions and, and weigh down materials, so we had a better idea of where the start is planned, so what you'll see are a couple, um, products, one, it is the, um, Nishia, um, and I think it's the spruce, um, material, and that really is a, um, a wood plank type material. Um, we have this, um, I'll call it a tami pattern on the, on the facade that works to kind of, on an eighteen inch dimension. Each one of those is, um, you'll see that, that, those planks on the, um, on the sample that I showed is six inches, so this really should work at helping to reinforce that pattern, um, it's a more resilient material that, that won't, um, uh, you know, change color, um, but it still has that warmth and that, um, that would kind of, that we're looking for. We're also looking at, um, we're also have the sandwich panel at the core ten locations, um, that help us, uh, to get that, um, that kind of core ten look, um, and weather metal look, um, so you'll see that as punctuated in the, um, uh, on the elevations, that's a, a pure free-form product. Um, we also have, uh, in terms of, uh, cost efficiency, as we work our way to the interior courtyard, we have, uh, another, uh, material that I think is the sand castle, um, it's a wood tone fiber cement, um, on the inside, um, so that's being used as well. And, uh, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Um, oh, the, uh, the greenery, so we wanted to be mindful of, of, uh, I think Mr. Mantris made a comment around the, the look of the project relative to the um, uh, to the greenery, yeah, given our. around the, the look of the project relative to the, to the greenery, given our climbing, climbing mission. And so we've looked at this, this faux greenery as a way to kind of punctuate, like from the renderings, any of those locations where we've got the, the vertical lattice. So the idea is to put those, move those sporadically. We don't need them in every vertical condition, but the idea is that those work their way around the project in a way that supports the overall, the overall image. They require less maintenance and still have a, I think, a, you know, a fairly, you know, good impact in terms of how the project shows up and is, is postured in terms of the greenery. We will use that in concert with some natural materials at grade. But I, I think we'll find that that is more resilient and more operationally manageable from an architectural and, and operation side.
So where's that going? Is it going on? Like if I look at the top rendering?
Yes.
Is it on that building too? And, and then on your screens?
So the, I think the idea, the, it's not, I think the, the answer is, is both and. So we likely will look at a, a product on the walls of the, of the building that is, is a grow material. I think we could, if preferable to the board, they want to see that on the building, could also look at that. But I think primarily it would be on the, on the vertical screen elements kind of stacked around and varied throughout the elevations. But that will be in concert with the planters at the base of, at grade for the, as a growing for the garage. FFNE, we have included some specifications with regard to landscape furniture. I believe that came up last time at the last meeting. So we've included those. You know, I think now that the appropriate warranties, material or warranties, you know, will be, they'll be high quality pieces of furniture. With regard to lighting, we did get the staff comment about uplighting. And primarily the, the main, I would say, the main fixture for the building, as you work your way around the facades, is, is adjacent to the balcony doors. And that's going to be downlit. The idea is that this isn't a heavily, you know, or a, a project that's heavily lit or has a high contrast with the lighting. It's really supposed to be kind of an ambient condition. I would say that, that is consistent with the landscape of the park as well. So really trying to make it safe, you know, and appropriate for, for where this is. But there will be a lot of feature lighting, especially in gravity two. So we don't want anything that's going to compete with that kind of feature, feature type lighting and artwork. And obviously, you know, not something that's going to contribute a significant way to any type of light. The spirit of, I think, what the city's looking for. What am I saying? Yeah.
One other item I wanted to note is that a change we've made since the April approval is that now we are fully securing the garage. So this, so we'll have additional screening where we previously had some garage openings at level one. And this is in addition to everything we've shown before, the landscape planners, the benches, the trees, the growing lines. So we think this, this element will help eliminate some of the opening void spaces that you can, where you can see it far, as in it'll really enhance the pedestrian experience.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Only question I have, the siding, the kind of wood looking siding. Is that going vertically? Those, those panels, the tummy included stuff, that's vertical, right?
Yeah, it's, if you look, I think on page this is, apologies, on the elevation page, you can see that there is a pattern that actually uses it horizontally and vertically. I think it adds to the overall aesthetic, so it's not as consistent, but it helps to, to modulate that facade in a way that, you know, I think could be.
So it's patchwork kind of thing?
It works in kind of a, a tami type of, type of pattern.
Anyone else?
Okay, so let's talk about main wall stuff. I, I cannot escape that I feel like I'm in aisle two of Michael's right now. Where, where is this going? Is it going on all those verticals screens? You said some of the vertical screens.
Yeah, and I don't know that it, it, the intent is not for it to be on every vertical element on the balconies. The intent is that it is like the renderings in, in some locations. And there is a, there is a lattice backup at those locations that's actually, you know, making the form of those balconies as they, as they connect to one another. So we don't want to put that everywhere. We really want to use it selectively. And and supplement that really with, with real raw, you know, raw material at grade, et cetera. So it's a, it's a kind of combination of both.
Have the renderings been updated since the, since the last time you were in here as an application?
Yes.
So you know, there was, two months ago or three months ago, there, there was the concern between changes that were made to some of the elevations in the parking garage that were not shown, updated in renderings. So your, your architectural elevations didn't necessarily match the renderings that were from a previous application. I think that if, if the, the renderings show, the renderings do not have that material on every balcony. Is the percentage of balconies in the, in the renderings equivalent to what you guys are looking for? Or will there be more or less? And I guess if less, how much less? I guess if it's showing rendering, you know, showing them on, on most of the balconies to that size coverage, is that what you're, is that what you're looking for? And will it be end up, will it end up being scoped down from there?
I, I think we're, and I'm going to mistake you, Stephanie, but I think we're looking at what, what show the renderings as a rough, as a rough percentage. That is, you know, compositional is what we're trying to achieve.
Correct.
And the, and the renderings now are, have been updated to kind of match the, the parking garage, the additional parking garage screening?
Right.
And, and more accurately match the, the, the current and most recent elevations?
Correct.
Great. Didn't mean to jump in there.
That's right. I mean, double check on that. Only thing I'm going to say about this is, and I may be the only person on this commission that feels this way, but I worry that that particular material, trying to play so realistic at scale in January, is going to look tacky. I, you know, I worry about that. I, I would actually go for something that tried less to be so realistic. I mean, even, even the, the depth of that, I can just imagine you're going to have birds nesting in this thing. You know, like, I, I'm just very worried about the appearance of this and how, what its staying power is going to be long term. Is it going to be like, okay, got it. Now it's January. It's all green. It's Columbus, Ohio.
So I think, you know, and this came up in a few, I can't remember if it was in the prior or, but I think one of the things we're trying to address is because that green element is a, is, you know, part of the aesthetic of the project, to maintain it, you know, does, does something like this product get us to a, maintain that aesthetic over time? Or is it okay to, you know, have, have seasonal interest? You know, where, where that stuff goes away?
But you know what I'm saying? It's like, I, there are plenty of these moss-like things that, they're not pretending to be moss, you know, they're just, it's a texture. It kind of feels green, but it's also, it's not hiding the fact that it's a kind of artificial element. I, sure, that's, that's my only worry is that I look at this and I, I think aisle two of Michael's and it just, I'm just worried it's not going to, a year from now, people are going to be like, over this.
Sure.
And I may be the only person that feels it.
Can you go to slide 31? So this is, this is McDowell. Is this an updated rendering that, that shows the pattern on the siding and not the green on every one of the balconies?
Yes, I would say that there are, you can see in this, in this view, there are some of those vertical fins. This does not have those.
And, and not the fully screened garage?
Yes, in terms of the, the vertical bamboo elements. I think this was really about the, the lighting and it was kind of an intermediary rendering when we did it. But we were just trying to be responsive to timing of, of this meeting and want to make sure that you all kind of have an understanding of, of the sponsor's location, the downlighting, et cetera. So.
So Bart, you mentioned that you're, like, you're talking about the, the faux greenery here. What would you suggest in its place?
I would suggest looking for an option which doesn't try to look so realistic. Do something that's a little more abstracted, that's a little tighter to the building. I mean, that has some depth and it has a lot of variation. That's, I mean, that, I would suggest another option that is.
Off-color paneling of some kind or?
Was that?
Off-color paneling, not like bright green and blue or anything?
No, it could, it could be a three dimensional, it could be green. It probably wants to be green. It could be three dimensional. It's just something which is not, not trying so hard to be 100%. It'll look great in the summer. People will never know. And then in the winter, I mean, you, you see the houses with the fake flowers out front and then you see them in January and you pay attention to that house. That's, that's what I would voucher.
As part of our Greenhouse ethos is nature is a, is a huge component. So we want to make sure that that nature element saves all year round.
I guess that, but it, it's fake nature. It's, it's actually fighting that ethos, I think, a little bit.
I don't know if I go as far as calling it Michael's. I do, I see what you guys are going for. I, I think my big question, I'm kind of, what does it look like in 15 years? Like, and I don't know that piece. I, I'm not necessarily bothered by, I, I, I love greenery. So I, I see what, what you guys are doing. I do wonder what, what 15 years looks like, you know? I don't know. What does that aging look like?
And that's, that's a fair question that we take into considerations on the operation side of things. You, we do that with everything, whether it's, you know, our, our windows, our, our door. It's, you know, that, that capital improvement in 15 years is something we take into consideration with every building element. I will also say that this is not, what you're seeing here is not going to be, we're not going to take this square, our exact square, and put it on, on the side of the building. This is the company that's going to do it. It's representative of the material and how real look. But we will certainly take your advice in something that has more of a natural feel and make sure that it.
Maybe it would help, Bart, could, could you open up the, the proposed materials? And one of the items is the Vista Folia package. That's the company that does this, correct?
Correct.
And there, there's a, you know, kind of a 30-page brochure for just that material that you could look at. There may be other options that you like that or?
So it's just like, this is a sample of?
It's of representation.
All sorts of possible?
Correct.
Faux folias that could be, you know, so maybe it's like, and then use less of them and you use the, the things that are a little tighter dimension.
Exactly. And one thing Jess has mentioned is that it will probably, at the end of the day, be a little bit more drapy in some places. But given the location on the resident balconies, we also want to make sure that it's not something that the residents have the option of watering or not watering if it's out real. So it, it has to.
Yeah, I don't think they have to water.
No, they don't have to water those.
I guess I'm not as hard set against it as, as you are. I think if there's a possibility of, of a version of this that maybe is a little less tropical. I think that would be, I think that would be something that is a little more regionally based greenery. Cause I think if you, if you were to blend in some, some evergreen type sprigs and things that would make sense to be green in the winter.
Like ivy, less fern, more ivy.
Less fern, more ivy, the, the, some of the, some of the tropical plants that are kind of in that sample, I think would stick out much more in the winter than something that would be more regionally based greenery. That would really be my only comment. That's a really cool brochure by the way.
Yeah. Or you could make a, a nice pattern out of bright tropical plants that could punctuate it. I'll warm up to it.
For, for what, for what it's worth, I mean, I, I think overall the intent is, is to support the overall kind of experience and, you know, aesthetic of the project. Certainly, you know, not to be tacky, you know? And so I think from a, from, you know, from a design perspective, you know, call it, or to make, make sure that, that, that comes through. So, you know, all the comments around, you know, appropriated types, you know, plantates, things that we can see in, in our environment, definitely make sure we're not going to put palm trees on the building.
All right. So what I gather, listening to this, is that at the end of the day, we're going to trust the applicant to, to choose an appropriate, choose an appropriate faux greenery for balcony walls?
The, the changes that you've made with the garage and the screening and the bamboo shoots on the first floor are all indicative of comments that we've made over previous meetings. I mean, unless, I don't have any concerns.
No, I think, I think everything else looks great. That's, this is my only piece that it either makes the project fun or kills it a year from now. That's the, but I, I trust the applicant. I think they, they have the track record. They've executed in the past and they know that, they know the issues that I'm talking about.
Good, fair enough. And I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the project as second.
Don't worry, the second is in the last meeting. The application is submitted.
Hey, Mr. Overly and Mr. Knoppe, he's cedes his second to Mr. Manfris. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And, all the roll, please.
Mr. Fergus?
Approved.
Mr. Manfris?
Approved.
Mr. Overly?
Approved.
Mr. Knoppe?
Approved.
And Miss Bennet?
Approved.
Motion carries.
Okay. I will now cease the application. I don't want to get out of here. So thank you very much. We have one conceptual application. It is EF 2207 003, address is 630 West Broad Street. The applicant is Brad Arish. The owner is Kirk Barker. And at this time, I have to depart the meeting. TJ, you have the honor of being chair for the rest of the afternoon.
Accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. From staff before?
Yes.
Okay. This project is EF 2207 003 630 West Broad Street. This is a conceptual review for construction, new construction and demolition within the West Broad Street Sub District. It's a new mixed-use project that includes a new seven-story mixed-use building with a two-story internal parking structure, five stories multi-family residential. The applicant has not quite landed on a number of units yet. There will be double-height commercial spaces along West Broad, including covered patio spaces for future tenant use. They are proposing various levels of outdoor courtyard and amenity space. This project would require the demolition of the existing buildings on site and at this time, they have not identified any development standard modifications. This middle includes existing condition photos, conceptual site plan, elevations and perspectives. The proposed use is consistent with the East Franklin and Creative Community District Plan. The plan suggests a wide range of architectural styles that are appropriate for East Franklin with a preference for contemporary building design and materials and that new construction should be integrated into this surrounding neighborhood. The plan also recommends that buildings have a consistent level of detailing on all four sides and contribute to street activity. Preservation of existing buildings is encouraged or possible. And finally, the plan recommends the inclusion of street trees on all public streets. As such, staff recommends the applicant continue to refine the proposal, focusing specifically on further activation along the side elevations, the east and west, and making changes to the architecture of the building by way of additional height and/or articulation, as well as creative use of materials to break up the mass and better blend in with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant should also work with the city forester to include street trees as appropriate across the site. Staff is supportive of the proposed use, but knows that additional information will be needed to, need to be provided on the site plan, floor plans, materials, landscaping, lighting, demolition, and any other development standard modifications when the applicant does return for action. No staff recommendation as this is a conceptual review.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I guess swearing the witnesses, the applicants. Do you state your name for the record? It's my first time, it's my first time, so bear with me. First and last time.
Yep. Rand Dolan with Marv Development.
Jonathan Grub, Architects.
And do you affirm the, to tell the.
Swear.
Swear and affirm that, that what you're stating is factual, is.
Accurate and factual.
Accurate and factual?
I do. I do.
All right.
Nice job.
Yeah, it could be better.
Yeah. Go for it. Sure, so we've got some updated visuals for this concept. Been here about two months ago. Some of that initial feedback regarding the sightlines for the church adjacent to the east of the site. We made a modification where the building now kind of steps back to let that church facade shine. The renderings are also showing the upgrade going to the church, so they're increasing the height of that spire. And then with some feedback we had last time as well, was the addition of some residential units on the north part of the site as well, adjacent to where they're going to be upgrading or building a new convent. So that they're still in the works and trying to coordinate our project to take into account all of those changes as well as our future development to the west of the site. So, that's kind of where we're at now. We've got an updated patio on top of that second, on top of the podium itself with the kind of stair going up, so you get some further activation in outdoor space programming for the residents. This will all be kind of private, as well as the garage, so that'll be a secured garage and then covered patio space, moving the commercial leasing office over to the east side of the site as well, which originally was on the west side.
So, I like a lot the new updates. I like the, I don't know if that's glazed ceramic tile, it's the blue, is that?
Yeah, so we actually brought some samples here, we can pass around.
I'm trying to play, I'm just shooting that up. The Columbus Art Memorial Building that is there, the Hydralisk site, so they're kind of. Trying to play into the phone.
Yeah. It's a terracotta kind of shingle. Again, we're kind of still looking at colors. It's a pretty heavy turmeric product, we've used it before. And so with this product, you can kind of choose a matte gloss, mid-finish, and also choose different colors as well and pretty much curate the pattern that you want.
I previously just used that product on the Cincinnati Ballet.
What is? So I assume it comes with lots of different colors.
Tongue to tongue.
Yeah, though, you know, like, I really like the, the massing type that you're working with, like, it's an open courtyard, so it's open to Broad Street, but you can think of it as a series of blocks that have locked together, but my, my thought is, as it moves from a conceptual review and time moves along, is you start thinking about, you know, going back to that idea of the blocks, like, I, when I see the, I love the, the little cut with the outdoor area that, you know, the covered porch, right? But then underneath it, it's like that block is, the ceramic or the terracotta base is kind of popping out to High Street. And then it also sort of, there's another block that's underneath it. To me, it feels like the base is a different block, and so when it gets, when I get that same terracotta look, it looks a little veneer-y to me, and I just wonder if, you know, maybe that base piece is, even though it's kind of jumbled, it's like, the base is sort of jumping around to activate the sidewalk and all of that, but maybe that wants to be a little more consistent as a base material or a base element. And then you have this big blue block floating overhead, you know? So I really like the, the scale of this, you know, that get these, what looks like independent buildings that march along Broad Street, but then in fact, it's, it's this kind of open courtyard.
Yeah, I think kind of the conversation last time we were here is really about obviously activating on four sides, but really providing some dynamic intrigue to that Broad Street, or Broad Street. Streetscape, but for us, it was about really turning the massing, so it reads as well, whole buildings, so that your sightlines and your vision doesn't just stop at the streetscape, you start to see above it, you start to change your eye height, your eye level. And really start to make it a much more engaging design.
What's the material of the non-wood block?
It's brick below the podium itself and then most likely a hardy dip sauce is above. And then the blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are the, those are the, the three hardy colors. Now, already the, the cementious material for the, for the siding on the, on the massive, Archer Mass Building.
What about just ditching the brick and doing more, doing like a more neutral terracotta at the base? I mean, is it, is it a, is it more expensive, is it?
More significant anymore?
Yeah. Well, so what about, like, okay, so what about, like, that's not so traditional ground brick? Like, it could be, it could be a larger module type, it could be, it could be a block, like a face block. Eight-by-eight face block, so it's like something that's a less expensive material than the, I get that that stuff's probably crazy expensive, but, but it just, that's it, that's the great, so it's great.
It's more gray, I think the, the.
Red, redish.
Sure. Yeah.
But I like the idea of trying to make it larger.
Well, you know, you got the terracotta, which is.
I like that, like, the brick on the rendering. Brick on the rendering looks tan.
Yeah.
But it's got a lot more variation, that looks like it's.
Black, gray.
It's always sunny here. Always, it's nice and warm.
Yeah. I, I mean, those are, those would be my recommendations moving ahead. I, I think the project has really made some strides from the last time we saw it, because I know it was early on, but I love that wood material, that's going to look great, that's going to be kind of an exciting, you know, like that it's a nod to the buildings that existed there.
I appreciate the step back to the, where you can still see the church coming down Broad Street from the west, west balcony, so. Thank you guys for that, I'm very.
I actually still have some serious concerns on that. I appreciate the attempt to address it, but it's not, I don't think it's really far enough at all, because if you're even on the corner of your building, on the sidewalk, the western, the corner, you will not see the church, you know, even based on their diagram.
So you're saying like, right there, as in, that technically, okay, so.
That right there.
Yeah.
See the angle? I mean, anything west of the corner of their building, the church is invisible. And you, you have to, you, you really do have to take quite a chunk out of the building in order to, for that building to be visible from the 3:15 on ramp.
What if, what if you took, I mean, I agree with that, but what if the base was the thing that, I know, I know the big blue thing has got to still block the, the church, but if it were more of a hovering thing and I got more transparency at the street, at that kind of two-story street level piece, so you cut that back and get a little more sidewalk in the process?
So when, and when else, one other times in urban settings, do, would we want to cut back the, the very buildable parcel of a lot so that we can see the existing building next to it? I understand that it is a church and that it is historic, and how is that different than any other building? And why would, I'm just asking, why would we ask that somebody cut square, buildable square footage out of a parcel that they're buying to build on in an urban environment where we're not density purely to look at a historical church?
Yeah, I, I think if it's not projecting more forward, I think it's more, for me, it's more an issue as much as it is, you know, giving some visibility to the church, I think we have a similar condition down the street with the, what's the project that Setterling did that's across the street from Gravity 3? You know, that it projects past the fire station, the new, you know, so that fire station gets, and, you know, the fire station, granted, it's sitting way back, but, you know, it wasn't very sensitive the way that, that building pushed up against the sidewalk, nor is it very great from a pedestrian standpoint, because you got no sidewalk, I mean, Broad Street is very narrow sidewalk, so I, I feel like if the blue thing hovering stayed where it was, but you carved back the streetscape, you're going to get a little more visibility from a car, you know, you're, you're still going to have the blue block there, but.
Is that, is that angled step, is that essentially your podium slab that's at, at an angle like that that'll come all the way out?
Oh, wow.
I mean, that, that could look kind of neat to cut that bottom floor and a half.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that.
And load that PT can't lever over the edge a little bit. I mean, I, I agree with what you said. If you stand on the north side of that, of that street, on, towards west that building, you're not going to see that church. But I don't know if that's any different than, you know, most other places in an urban environment. You're, you don't build buildings so you can see your neighbor's houses.
Okay. Well. And I mean, I think our discussion initially was that seeing it as you're driving by.
Yeah.
Not as much.
As you're getting off.
As you go through ways.
You're going to get your board off seat from the street, from the car, that it wouldn't be from the actual sidewalk. It's a urban design, right? I mean, it's trying to recognize a historic element.
It's, it's almost a very, it's a slight nod to the historic nature of that.
I don't think it has to be from every aspect, you have to see the church, I think it's more like a discovery, it's a surprise, like, oh. I think the building has much more character, cutting that, you know, 5% corner off the edge. It just is a, you know, a non-right angle on the front of that building that gives it kind of a little more interest than just a totally square building, but.
Yeah, I think for us, it's, it is about kind of a, kind of discovery as you walk along the site, kind of appears, and then you, then it kind of frames the view, whereas if you're coming by, by car vehicle, it's a different approach, different visibility. I think, you know, from an urban standpoint, you set the whole building back, that becomes kind of suburban, like you've got a 20-foot yard all the way across, and that's not necessarily beneficial to Broad Street.
But actually, even in this view, Amy, I can see the church. I see it. Well, that's the way it was drawn.
I'm just supposed to see it. I really, I really like the massing of the building on the, on the east side with the terracotta with the glass and the, and the exposed kind of PT slab. I think that's, that's going to be, if it stays like this through multiple iterations, I think that's going to be a really neat-looking portion of the building. The west side of the building seems like it's, it's a little, a little drab right now. I like the blue siding, I like how the blue siding picks up the terracotta. I would almost use more of the blue siding around all the windows and less where you've got the dark, where it steps back, might give it a little more color and a little more interest. For as much of an interesting architecture and design that is on the east side, the west side of the building looks a little, a little more suburban or a little more office style.
It's a monkey building to the other side.
It's just a little more tan.
Yeah. What if, what if the, the corner balconies, maybe start to look at them more as cuts? You know, like the, like the monkey cut here, but like, I could, I could see that building, even though it's like different material, it's sort of like, you know, straight man to the comedy act, you know, but, but it could, those, those balcony pieces could be sort of like the, you know, I still get the balconies, I still get them at the corner, but maybe the sheeting covers up or, you know, sort of makes a, a shape skin to the balconies in some way, make them a little less uniform.
Yeah, I, I think what I like the best about the, the portion to the, to the west is the, the recessed dark cutouts. The, where the use of the blue around the windows and the blue on the first floor, even with that brick, looks good. And on the backside, the terracotta kind of blended into that brick on the first floor where you got your residential on the backside on the north. I think all looks, all looks great. I really, I really like it from a conceptual standpoint, I don't need. Yeah, I like, I like the move that you made, I think is very successful. And, you know, address the ideas that are the concerns we had for last meeting. The thing I'm really interested in now is this piece that's below the, the cut. That's, that's proposed to be residential, right? All the way down to grade, at least that's what your diagrams.
Which one? You're talking about the corner adjacent to the church?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the leasing office, it's two-story, so the podium itself, the parking lot will be in the back, and then it's going to be a 20-foot clear retail base. In the blue building, we approached it to be uniform with the ground floor, because that's going to be your residential leasing office component.
Okay, it, it says it's residential on your diagrams, so that's an office at the front floor?
Leasing office, yeah, like the leasing amenity, and where you're going to go and then explore it.
Yeah.
Sign it, yeah.
Right. So, again, I would fall between my architecture colleagues, but it seems like that whole piece, the bottom piece of the building sets itself up to be something different and, and special. And right now, at least, it's just, you know, it's the same persona coming down to the grade after the cut through. Seems like at the cut through, that something different could happen.
Yeah, but the blue thing floated above it and then the leasing office.
But isn't that, I mean, space is a leasing office, isn't it?
It is, yeah, it's like co-working, it's going to have a mess potential.
It, it's, it's not expressing itself. To me, that's, the leasing part of it should be, you know, think of it as retail, it's somehow, I mean, you've got chairs, tables, and stuff out there in front of it, it seems that wants to be an activated space.
Glass box.
And it needs other glass boxes underneath the.
It is a big blue, blue box. box.
That's wrong. That's your comment. I don't know what it is, but also, I was wondering, I think the cut is interesting. What would happen if it was just a big bulk, like you, you took out two floors there and it just went all the way through. And so you're really exposing the church. You'd say, but
Losing the, losing the lobby?
Yes. I'd rather just drop, drop it down so it's flat, it's, it's on the roof of the leasing office.
Then you lose their rule. Little steps, that's the So the steps right now is programmed to serve kind of two additional amenities, like the fitness component, the gym, kind of parlor amenity that opens up to that courtyard. And then below is kind of a co-working space, leasing office, hangout, coffee, the mailroom.
I'm just saying there's, I just think that, you know, exploring some ways to look at that as, maybe it's a box. But it, and I, I just think the way that it meets the grade should express itself of being more permeable in and out, you know, accessible, visible. It just looks like it's just, you know, residential coming down the grade. And I know it's still a space, but the other thing I was commenting going to make is that, I don't follow the home center ground, but the, the planning for Broad, the Broad Street corridor is not going to be available. It's going to be a totally different mark. I, so, you know, so we made a comment about the sidewalk being narrow there, but I think that's all changed. So thinking about this building sitting in that environment.
Land would just put the bike lanes.
Or just slow the traffic down.
Just. They've got the sports courts and people ball courts, I was going to say. Feel for that, right?
The other, the other comment I want to make is the, the townhouses on the site street, right?
Yeah.
I think those are real cool. I think that really helps to animate that old edge. But I, I liked a lot of the sort of doing, so it definitely set it in production.
Thank you.
I know that this is a standalone site, but you guys do have the one next to it.
We do.
Smart future development.
Yep.
And it's kind of hard to ignore, like, what's going to be going in and how they're going to complement each other. Obviously, you're in control of those, so you'll do your best to, to make sure that they fit. Have you put much thought into height next to this?
Yeah, next door, looking to be potentially taller. Still exploring some concepts, but really we're in need of office space, so high-level concept could include an office space for ourselves. Getting the frontage along through 15. Visibility signage.
I think that kind of goes, the conversations that we've had as a development team, I think what you mentioned, the, the left side felt kind of more office building, kind of more on massive. And it's kind of the thought of, if that's an office block, massing the next, that those two can start to really talk to each other from a scale proportions.
So it's one of these things for now, like the other. Yeah, because I was hearing comments about that western grayish, tannish building being plain and what we could do to, to change that up. But if there's going to be a even more massive building next to it, setting this one back or recessing the top two floors is not going to do a ton, I don't think. I mean, it might actually help with the whole, like, church visibility and things. If you recess the top two floors a little bit, or maybe paint it a different color. But I don't know that that really matters if you're building a taller building next to it.
And selfishly, we love to keep as much, we suppose square footage as we can.
But my thought, even just if it was pure massing, next time, put it in.
Sure.
Have you experimented with angles on the cutout? Is there a reason you stopped where you did?
Just really trying to activate that sidewalk as much as possible. I mean, it gets pretty large, especially if you do look at that kind of programming for what Broad Street is going to be doing. If we step it back even further, it really just becomes a huge kind of island of concrete that we want to put a leasing office there and not really sure how you program that, especially with the outdoor component, how many people, how much outdoor space you really have and year-round usage for it, so.
I haven't seen that yet. Is the, is the proposal for the Broad Street to bring the north side of Broad Street south a little bit and gain more sidewalk space along Broad? Because if that's the case, to your point, then, then you, you have a front yard when you're building in an urban setting. You might, you might have 60 feet there.
It looks like it's wider sidewalk all the way across with the central bus lanes kind of to streamline that service and then one lane traffic on either side. But like, yeah.
Yeah, when adding those rapid transit lanes and bike lanes, I'd be surprised if they actually have a lot of space left over. For an additional sidewalk.
It might be five feet.
It's what, two lanes plus, plus a parking or some service.
There's two lanes.
I, I wouldn't worry about too much space there. I think it would be very easy to program. Think about art. I mean, I think, I think the project could really use some public space, right? That's not private up in the top of the podium, but I think that corner, and I'll go back to that. And again, a part of your leasing experience, it's that indoor-outdoor experience. So how do you handle that?
Yes, the corners that we have right now on the east and west, right? Some cannoli brick portion from that podium, so you do have that outdoor amenity space. But again, we've got when, as much as you pointed out, the Gravity Three. So how much, how much usability do we have throughout December through March? Bargains.
As you can tell, the site plan, too, the right of way is already quite substantial with the sidewalk to the curb cut, so you know, whatever improvements to Broad Street. Back to your question regarding that angle. Again, part of it was kind of the intrigue as you're walking east across the site, but two, you know, for us, it was really framing the view of the new steeple and really that front half, because obviously, once you get past the back, back couple of the churches, it's a rhythm, right? So what you see the first two, you're going to see for the next four or five. So for us, it's really about framing that new steeple that front as really the vista.
And that's accurate. We can pick it. Those are good.
Yeah. Yeah, you can only go so far until really then the hindrance is the western part of your building.
Yep.
That's fully exactly the sidewalk, which is why I was kind of leaning towards recessing the, at least the top couple of floors. I think the angle's a cool concept that maybe, I mean, maybe you could go a little further with it.
I'm following you with this retail, or not the leasing space, and seeing what you're, what you're seeing and activating that. There, there is something there. So I'm following.
It'd be nice to have some, like, bistro-type tables out on the, in front of that cutout. I mean, I, I know you're saying a leasing office, but if it were some other use, it would easily activate that widened part of the sidewalk.
The cannoli libert area over top of the PT deck that, that kind of sits back over the, the stairs in that area. It's kind of a neat opportunity to, to put some interesting lighting shining down that can be, that could be changed colors or
For sure. We're looking at some ceiling details, whether it was wood or
Yeah, except for some really, really nice view from, from the street and definitely sidewalk, seeing up into that space. Anything else?
I'm just going to go back to the, the whole art comment, right? That's, I mean, if you look at the projects that have emerged in East Franklinton, they've all incorporated public art. And so, you know, I think some art, I mean, this will just really help to pop certain areas, spaces, whatever. I think as you move through this and start thinking about where that could happen, how that could happen.
Yeah, instead of a wood ceiling, maybe that's a, that's a Sistine Chapel-like
I think we approved such a thing before that never actually materialized.
Yeah.
Make sure that's that minute so that
So many painters are going to have to lay on their back to base that.
They're probably taking that opportunity, so.
Get up and aim by.
Right. My mom, my mom's a painter. She's done a few ceilings. She's never doing anything. I don't believe that. So is there any other feedback you want from us at this point? Anything in particular that you guys are?
I think just, you know, again, we're, we're happy to kind of keep the conversation going, keep the dialogue going. We had a good conversation with preliminary site compliance today, so we're no major issue going on. So yeah, we're just looking to keep advancing. You know, I think we're happy with the material. We're happy that you guys are. Overall, passing sounds are very big alignment, so just coming back with more detail. And, you know, back to the, the, this building has four sides. It's also has four urban edges, streets. And, and I can't remember the, I'm trying to remember the plans for the content and all that. I remember they had a very
Pretty intense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had a lot of stuff going on.
We had this.
And so how do you guys relate to that interface that blended? I think that, that's something else.
I thought you were going to say no burning bushes.
Burning bushes.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate you guys.
Appreciate it.
Do we have anything else for Stat? Stat, do we have anything else?
Chairman.
With that, call meeting to, to end? Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for taking this out. Taking this, taking this with me.
Bill really does that. Bill, we haven't heard you go. He missed all the big
Thanks, Bill.